How's everybody doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm fine. Thank you. Alan, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
I have no picture.
You gotta click video.
Click, oh. There we go. Oh, man, I'm answering.
Yo, head audio.
That better?
There you go.
All right. Old dogs, new tricks. I know, I'm one of the old, old dogs.
Those of us using other people's computers, please ignore our names.
You're working incognito.
Oh, I thought you were transitioning.
Easy, Eddie.
I know, I know, it's probably over the line, sorry.
Didn't bother me a bit. Remind me the next time I see you privately to tell you a story about that. I just read an article yesterday about, they were saying, oh, the young people like to use this thing called Slack or Stack, and like, what the hell is Slack, Stack? I guess I, I don't know, some kind of forum for. Oh, for what Eddie's talking about? Twitter, TikTok, or something, I don't know.
I hope not.
I don't know. I don't know much, I'm too old. We haven't, we have enough here to get started, I think we do. Yeah, we have a quorum. I say, what do you think, Alan, should we call this order to, I mean, this meeting to order?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. I'm just making some notes.
Do we have someone on the line?
I think that's Mr. Penny, right? Oh, I don't know who this is, on the telephone?
Yeah, I'm on, the two hundred five three one three is me, Stu.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
I'm on phone audio.
All right, you're coming up as Elizabeth Wool, Stu.
I am, you know, say hi to Laura over there.
Let it go. All right. It's called a meeting to order. Meeting's officially called to order, do we have any general discussion, is this where Mr. Penny is gonna talk?
Mr. Penny and Mr. Leboits are gonna talk.
All right.
For you.
You have the floor.
Thank you, thank you for your time tonight, my name's Steve Leboits, I'm chairman of the board of Miracle League of Northern Connecticut, and Todd Penny is our project engineer and also the town engineer for the town of Coventry. And I had spoken for a long time, long while, one day with Alan, I appreciate his time regarding what our mission is, our mission is to build a special needs baseball and/or soccer field somewhere in Northern Connecticut. It's a low turf field, I've coached challenger baseball for the handicap for over thirty years, and our feeling is it's long overdue to put a field somewhere for these special kids. There's two fields currently in Connecticut, one in East Lime, the other one in West Hartford, and there's, excuse me, there's two hundred and seventy fields of this type around the country. And we're currently fundraising to, you know, build this field, you know, depending on our location, the estimates anywhere between four hundred thousand and five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build this field, like I said, it's a low turf field, it's handicap accessible, it's a rubberized field, very easy to roll wheelchairs on it, the ball bounces very uniformly, there's no bases, the field is different, has different colors of the low, the low half inch turf, so the infield will look different from the rest of the field or the pitcher's mound, but that's because it's different type of turf, so it's a hundred percent handicap accessible. It's been used for soccer, baseball, kickball, modern dance, and lacrosse, East Lime also uses theirs for lacrosse, so we're looking for a location for our field, we've, we're talking to area towns, we've talked to Vernon, we've had dialogue with Vernon, Coventry, Talend. And so yours is the fourth town we've approached, and so far, we've been approached with a lot of excitement about putting this field in, in the other towns. We became aware a few weeks ago that you folks had an available field, that there's no longer a little league program in Wellington, and that's where I struck up the conversation with Alan, you know, we feel it's a great project, it's great to a community. The app, both East Lime and West Hartford draws players from forty-five different communities, and generally have about a hundred and fifty players a week coming, traveling to that field, just because it's such a great, unique field, it's sort of like a field of dreams for special needs kids. Some of the complexes also have special needs playgrounds, and in addition have, some of them also have what's called a Kevin's Court, I don't know if you're aware of that, it's a handicap accessible basketball court built by the Twenty First Century Talend Fund, and they want, you know, their goal is to create basketball for anyone of any type of ability, so all the kids can play together with mom and dad, and they all have different sized hoops and everything else, but right now, we're just looking for, you know, a location for our special needs, special needs baseball field. And, you know, we've gotten a lot of momentum, on our advisory board, we have the CFO of the Boston Red Sox, Tim Zoo, Jim Penders, the head baseball coach at UConn, is on our board, he's running a baseball clinic for us February fourteenth, or February thirteenth, Super Bowl Sunday at the Star Hill Bubble, we also have Tim Restall, the general manager at Hartford Yard Goats, very involved in our project. So, we've, like I said, we've raised a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, really, without a location. You know, so the general public's been very giving toward us, and we try to run a project every month, and we, we know that once we find a location, put a face on this project, well, raising the money's gonna be least of our problems. So, yeah, I'd like to, you know, that's a little bit about us, you know, I'd like to throw it out to you guys to see if you have any questions or comments or concerns and.
Well, Steve, I don't know if, again, guys, thanks for having Steve and I on here, so a little bit about me, I'm a licensed engineer, worked for Coventry as their town engineer for about fourteen plus years, worked in the consulting world, worked for Vernon for a period of time, so thirty-two years of experience, I know I don't look that old, but so when Steve mentioned to me that, and I, I'm sorry, Alan is the guy from.
Alan Humphreys, the recreation director, right?
Okay, when he talked to Alan, I live on exit sixty-nine, guys, so I drive by exit seventy when I'm coming back and forth, visiting my kids in the Boston area, so I know that River Road, I know that field pretty well, driving by it. I know you guys sank a bunch of money into it not too long ago, and redid the, the ball fields, looks good. So, my job with the Miracle Field, along with the fundraising, is to kind of show what this field looks like, or show the footprint of the field and how it might relate to another ball field, et cetera, et cetera. It's a hundred and twenty-five feet, is, is home, home base to the outfield, so special needs, we're not dealing with, it almost could be a T-ball, I mean, that's the other, think of it in terms of kids learning to play baseball, it could be a dual purpose as a T-ball league, as you get fours and five years old, learning the game. Talk about an even bounce, talk about a field that could be quite, quite a awe inspiring kids for just coming out to the game for the first time. So, when Steve mentioned to me that he talked to Alan, I said, okay, I thought about, you know, showing that field on top of your baseball field, but then there was a subsequent conversation about, we don't want to lose this field, and I certainly get it, because, you know, so it's a rubberized fabric that will go over an asphalt surface, so you have about twelve inches of process aggregate, you have a two and a half to three inch lift of the tuminous concrete, so basically a parking lot that you have to fine grade very well, so I mean, basically, the pitcher's mound is the high point, and then you have a one and a half percent that sheds from that pitcher's mound out to the outfield in surrounding areas, so that pitcher's mound is the apex or the high point of the field, and then it sheds at one and a half percent. So, it's an accessible field, you can't have any gradient greater than two percent on an accessible surface, so one and a half percent gives you some tolerance to be a little bit steeper and a little bit shallower, so that water will run off to the site, so when we talked about the fact that maybe there wasn't quite this interest of abandoning that ball field, I looked at if we could get this very, a much smaller footprint, and I kind of worked up a quick concept plan that I, I sent to Steve on Sunday, and if you'll let me share my screen, I can show you guys the concept that I have, and I basically used CROGS, which, you know, Wellington and Talend and Coventry are all member towns of Coventry, so there's a twenty sixteen aerial flight, and there's a local GIS that you can use to determine property ownership and rough configurations of the boundary. And then I can kind of, it actually kind of fits to the south of the ball field.
I got a second, I don't know how to share screen.
You're fired.
If you go, if you go over, I think if you hover over my name, I think it'll, if you want to make me host.
Yeah, I saw that, I can do that.
You can make me host.
Or a co-host, yeah.
Believe me, I'll give up the duty.
Okay.
I just think it'd be good for you guys to get a sense, and obviously, we're just dipping our toes in the water, so to speak, in terms of, is it a feasibility here, is that something that you guys would be interested in?
I have one question.
Go ahead.
So, it could be a multi-purpose field, but it can't ever be a little league field again, right?
Well, and, and, and this is what I wanted to show you, so this is, this is a portion of River Road Athletic Complex, is I believe what you guys call it. This is the two thousand and nineteen Aerials. So, Route thirty-two here, eighty-four is here, north is up on the page. And this is your baseball field, you've got a sidewalk or a loop pedestrian way around the whole complex, you've got your parking into here, and we've got the commuter lot to the south of the property. So, when we looked at, when we were typically, when we typically look at using an existing field, and what is great about sites that are already developed, the cost for constructing these fields go down because you're not dealing with raw lands, you don't need to cut trees, you don't need to grub stumps, you don't need to haul out the unsuitable material, you can just box out to your subgrade with your twelve inches of processed fine grade, make sure you have appropriate drainage installed, and then you can pave and put your surface on top, so again, this is a very high level plan, all right, this is done without any survey plans, this is done, you know, I'm an, I'm an engineer, right, I'm a licensed, I'm a professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, I know how to CYA myself, right? So, it, it's done really with this very high level plan, but it kind of gets you a sense of how small of a footprint this field is. And if you look at, and again, the resolution gets a little bit wonky here because of how I printed from the, the GIS, but you can see, it kind of gets, it kind of, it kind of works, you got your outfield, and again, into here from your existing field, and again, the pixels are a little granulated because of the resolution. But, and we kind of cut off the sidewalk into here, but I mean, that could be a possibility for us to, you know, relocate that potential sidewalk, there is, I saw in the Aerials, and I haven't gone out to the site directly, I didn't have a chance today to do that, but it looks like there's a double utility pole that ends right on that southerly end, and you guys probably know it a lot more than I do. It doesn't look like that overhead continues, it looks like that's the end of that line, maybe you guys can confirm or deny that, but that triple circle is roughly where that double pole is, the yellow line is your property line, so it looks like we do, we do kind of go over that property line a little bit, the other property probably being the state of Connecticut, seeing it's a commuter lot, and so really, we've got the, the field and the dugouts in green and the infield in, in that tan, and your foul lines, and again, so you've got a hundred and twenty-five foot fence line, so it's not a big field, you know, and again, it's, it's not where you'd be putting double A or triple A out there, or majors, your baseball is gonna be on that, and I did hear that you guys have lost, at least temporarily, the Wellington Little League, you know, maybe due to numbers, and maybe that'll come back, et cetera, et cetera, so that's, that's what we're talking about, and again, we kind of keep the alignment of the field to the optimal alignment, which is north, northeast, any ball field really should be aligned that way, if you can, for setting sun out of the hitter's eyes, so that's kind of that north, northeast alignment. So, I wanted just to kind of show you, you know, you know, this high level planning document. Yeah, there, I think there's a pitching cage over there, or a batter's cage.
There is.
Yep, you know, there's a pitching cage over there. So, we could, that could get maybe relocated somewhere over to here, and again, this is just the first conversation, and.
Right.
So, with that.
How, how would you handle the, you know, there's the boundaries of our property, you're, you're, you're on the state's property, you'd have to go to them and ask them for that property?
Right, yeah, I mean, I think what I could do is we could even try to move, so that is the dugout. And it was Joe, Joe?
Yes.
Right. That's the dugout, I mean, we can tweak this a little bit, maybe even shift it a little bit further and tweak a dugout, so it's off of the property line, the further I can tweak it, say due east a little bit, maybe I, maybe we try to reconfigure this sidewalk, maybe this comes down into the sidewalk, and the sidewalk loops in, in around this way, maybe there's a sidewalk to the Miracle Field, but then maybe this loop kind of comes around into here and then out, it's a great loop, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a great way when your kids are playing soccer and the moms are wanting to relieve the stress, right, and, and they're going out and making the loop road and still keeping an eye on, on things.
You just, you get a lot of traffic on that, just for every age walking, people are.
Yeah. That is a, it's really a walking path, not so much a sidewalk.
Yeah.
And it's used quite a bit, we probably have more people using the pet, walking path than anything else on that field, I mean, over a period of a year.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna have trouble putting it down at the end there and canceling, you know, and basically disrupting that path, it's a one-third, I think it's one-third of a mile.
It is.
And it's just gonna be tough, I mean, we have, we have other fields around, I mean, we can talk about some of the other properties in town, I'm not sure we're gonna be able to put it down there, though, that's just my own personal feeling.
We're supposed to put a pickleball court in, on the backside of the hoop court this year, too. So, like where your right field, center field is, we're supposed, we've already contracted to have a pickleball court put in there through CIP.
Okay, and, and that's something that obviously we weren't aware of, so I mean, again.
Right, no, absolutely.
If, if this doesn't work, it doesn't work, and that's, that's, that's the great, that's the great thing about initial conversations.
Right, I'd like to jump in with a question, is it possible for you to have enough room to maybe put in this field with the combined soccer field over, up near the top picture, where the soccer field is, in that, yeah, like if you move your mouse up, yeah, in that general area, could, could a combo field fit in there?
Well, I guess.
Al. But it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a full soccer field.
Yeah.
You know, it's a special needs soccer field, so it's not, maybe U-six, maybe U-eight at best. So, I know that most of that field, or I should say, when that field gets used, most of the time, it's for practice, the teams rent out the fields for practice, so, you know, I, if it's possible, I think it's something, you know, what we could, we could have a discussion about.
Right. Well, I, I guess I would ask you this, Alan, because there were improvements done to this field recently, did you guys have a base map, or did you have a consultant that did the engineering or contract documents redoing this field?
I doubt it.
No, no, Joe, we use, we use Carl, Carlos Simovic.
Yeah, Carl Asimovik, but I mean, I, I don't think there was a lot of high-end engineering going on there, it was just placement more than anything.
Yeah, I mean, I can give Carl a call, I know Carl pretty well, he lives in, he lives in Coventry, and he, we actually use him for our dams, he is probably one of the foremost dam experts in the state of Connecticut. But, so I can reach out to him to see what sort of mapping, because the only reason I say that is, if he's got something that might be a little bit more precise than me downloading a PDF from the GIS and have this kind of resolution to kind of start to look at, but Alan, I can look at, you know, putting, showing you what this field would look like with our, our combination field. You know, it's a little bit different, the, I'm gonna, I'll kind of, and please forgive me, because I'm not the best here when it comes to what it looks like, but let me get into my tools and draw, so, and again, can't hold it against me, guys. Right, that ends up being the soccer field, so, and again, as Steve talked about, it's a, it's a much smaller, you know, and then, and then the fencing line shifts. You know, the fencing line shifts to here, so it's all enclosed, so we, I certainly do, do that exercise for you guys. to here. So it's all enclosed. So we, I certainly do do that exercise for you guys. And and show you, because it takes, it doesn't take me much more than a half an hour or an hour to put that plan together. So you guys can, you know, mull it over with some intelligence. And again, I kind of scale down on the whole area here to kind of give you a sense of the field. You know, if you want to see what this field looks like in the entirety of the of the campus of River, River Road Athletic Complex, could certainly show you that as well.
One question, one question, the soccer, is it, is it soccer or the baseball? I mean, you're obviously
Couldn't be both. East Lime is a combo field. Our original design was a soccer field when we were talking to Talon, you know, because they have top soccer, special needs soccer. The difference is cost. One of the most expensive parts of the field is is the material. Is is the, you know, the rubberized surface.
Right, so. I'm sorry, you use them both simultaneously or not simultaneously?
No, no, not simultaneously.
But I heard him mention fencing, now the fencing for the soccer field?
For the whole field.
The thing with, the thing with special needs children, you know, and I've helped, so Steve's been doing this for the last thirty years with his wife Laurel, the saint of the family. And I've been doing, helping them out for the last three or four years, coaching the kids, but you have kids with or special needs autistic scale, some physical disabilities. So without an enclosed field, there are runners. Right? So think of it this way, so they they like to go, you know, and every child has a buddy in this program that, you know, shadows them and helps them and you know, kind of mentors them during the game and practice. So with a fenced-in field, you don't have to worry about them running. They can run only so far as to the fence.
Hey Todd, it might help to show these guys, can you share your screen on our website? And show them really what, it really means a lot to me when I see it, what the field really would look like, the area of view of the East Lime Field?
Sure. Alright, that might give me, it might take me a minute to do.
I'm gonna make a basic comment if I can.
Go ahead.
I mean, it, it looks to me like we're jamming that into the corner of our park. And it, it doesn't look like it's gonna work down in the corner behind the baseball field, because you've already got a a batting cage there and you, we're gonna put a, another court there for pickleball. And I'm, and it just doesn't look like it fits down there. And if you put it up in the soccer field, Alan, you'd have to have a fence around it. So now you've cut the soccer field off a little bit, right?
Well, it creates its own field, you know, it
Still a fence around it.
Yeah.
So you lose, so can you lose half your soccer field?
I'm always wondering if Center School is a better location.
So we, we can't do it at Center School. I already talked to Phil about it. The leaching field is right next to that, so it wouldn't work there. And I asked about Hall School as well. And they're not sure what's gonna happen with that school if they're gonna, you know, with the whole situation. So they might need to end up using that extra field space that they have. But which actually kind of brings up another question. If we were able to get some other land in roughly the same area, you'd be willing to look into that, to putting the field there?
It depends on the cost. In in all our conversations with other towns, you know, we're not willing to remove trees or bring in fill. I mean, like I said, the field would cost about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And anything that we did beyond that, you know, we would just have to fundraise that much more. So basically, our our searches are looking for, you know, existing locations. You know, at this point.
River Road is attractive to you guys because it's right off the highway, right?
Well, it was attractive more, you know, the the whole reason I thought about Wellington is the president of Tom and Little League approached me and said, why don't you talk to Wellington? I think they don't have a Little League program anymore. They may have some fields that are available. And so that's really where, you know, and and I didn't know where the fields were or anything else. And so that's really why we approached you folks. Was we knew there were fields, we knew they weren't going to be used, we knew they hadn't been used for a couple of years. And we said, you know, you know, let's talk to Wellington and, you know, from, you know, we're northern Connecticut, so our our goal is to draw anywhere from Springfield to almost Rhode Island border, the whole northern Connecticut split, you know, north of Hartford is where we're looking to draw. And we're just, you know, we're just talking to different communities to see, you know, where the best location for this field would be. We know the field will be built. We know we'll find some place in northern Connecticut. And, you know, I reached out to Alan just based on the town Little League president reached out to me and saying, you know, Wellington, you know, hasn't had baseball for a couple of years. Maybe this is something that they would be interested in. And
I'm having trouble logging into your website.
I I got it. Alan, can you make me the host?
Yeah, so I have to, I have to stop being a host.
You have to unhost. But I think you can have multiple hosts.
Alright, you should be co-host.
Alright, perfect. I assume everyone can see that?
Yep.
That's our field. That's, you know, that that's what Todd was talking about with the soccer field as part of it. And obviously, it would cut off probably right about here and probably at the corner of the dugouts for the baseball field. You know, so what what we're looking for, you know, is we're looking to place it in a community. You know, we, we don't want a community to feel that they have to, you know, make accommodations to us. We're not looking to displace anybody. We're not looking to harm anybody. It's a great project. I mean, we're trying to create a field for special needs kids who up to this point have been displaced, who have had hardships, who play on a field where the sun sets in left center. Can you imagine, you know, six o'clock at night, the sun's in left center field? So you got a disabled kid trying to hit a baseball, which is hard enough to begin with, and the sun shining in his eyes. You know, you know, the fence is real important. We have kids with autism, they're runners. And so what we're, you know, what we're looking to do is we're just going around the different communities and saying, hey, we we got a great project, potentially, you know, a hundred to one hundred and fifty families will be coming to your town two to three nights a week. You know, to play on this field. And, you know, is this something, you know, that your town would be interested in? And that's, you know, so like I said, we've, we're approaching a bunch, bunch of different communities along I eighty-four. And that's why, you know, I had the conversation with Alan, you know, it's a great economic development thing. It brings people to the town. You know, it's a feel-good project. The other reason, you know, I liked your location is, you know, possibly for, you know, Kevin's Court on the basketball court. You know, so I almost saw it as sort of a special needs Mecca. You know, where the 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 playground could become ADA. You know, we raised money for that, you know, the Kevin's Courts Twenty First Century Talent Fund. You know, yours would be easy because it's a beautiful court. And then you normally put the NBA hoops on each end. You guys got beautiful hoops on each end already. You know, you guys did a great job with that. So making, turning that into a Kevin's Court would not be a major capital outlet.
But, you know, We're a small town and that parking area is, I don't know, six, how many cars, Alan? Fifty cars, forty cars?
If that.
So, so I I love the idea and I, and I love everything about it. But I I'm not sure logistically we could handle that many families, that many cars.
Well, that's not all at once. That, you know, you you probably have twenty kids on each team, maximum. So it'd probably be forty cars.
Right, so Alan's got the soccer field rented out. There's a Little League game. And then, you know, we have special needs kids playing in their area. I think we're, I think it's a lot of cars.
Do you guys have a lease agreement to use the?
We're not supposed to be in there, but I don't think they'd care.
Yeah.
The commuter lot?
Yeah, you guys don't have a formal agreement. Because I know it looked like the driveway goes to
It does go to it.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, so it's, it's almost implied. It may not be, it may, may not be legally written, but as long as you're not interfering with probably the four people that, and now they don't. And now with COVID, they don't go into Hartford anymore, right? They're working from their homes and
Yeah, that that lot does not see a lot of traffic. I think our parking lot sees more traffic because there's a toilet in it three quarters of the year. So do you guys realize that on the other side of that little river, they're building eventually three or four soccer fields?
No.
Am I right, guys? Isn't that happening?
Yeah, they're gonna be building, I don't know how many fit there, but at least they're gonna be building soccer fields.
Wellington is?
No, a private club, a private club.
Oh, really?
But I just talked to Mike, the zoning and planning agent today, and that's what we were talking about. They bought that field or that area the end of twenty eighteen, I think, and they haven't done anything with it. And I guess there's currently no plans to do something with it. They're like, they want to, they just haven't done anything about it yet. So, you know, we were kind of saying, maybe that's worth a phone call there to call them up. Hey, what are you guys doing with that field? You know, would you maybe be interested in making this field there? Oh, and having it be, you know, that's build the soccer slash baseball field there, and then they could still have a soccer field there, you know?
Right.
So I think that's, that's one of the ideas that we were kind of spitballing as an alternative to River Road. But, you know, there, there, that's multiple steps away. We'd have to get in contact with them, see what they say. Maybe they're not interested in that. Maybe they'd be willing to sell up a part of that back, you know? Which then Willington could look into at that point. You know, with, we have ARPA funds now, maybe that's a request Parks and Rec could make. Hey, can we buy this small amount of land to do something?
Right.
Like that, you know?
Well, you know, our, our intent was to get the conversation going. You know, and that's, you know, you know, as Joe, you said, nobody thinks it's a bad project. I mean, it's, it's a neat, neat project. It's a long overdue in northern Connecticut. It's, you know, it it's gonna be beautiful. It's gonna, you know, for these kids to be able to walk on that field. I mean, you know, some of our conversations with Talon is they have a hangover regarding their turf field. And they have to spend a million dollars replacing their high school turf field. I don't know if you've seen articles on that. And my kids, these kids will never be walking on that field on senior night. Playing in a football game. But, you know, it sort of gives these families something that's really, really amazing. You you know, and the the East Lime Field, which I showed you, I've been down there two or three times and I get goosebumps. It is just that cool a field to say, wow, you know, it's that need a field for these kids that, you you know, have been dealt, you know, a crappy hand.
Right, could I, Ken, Alan and Joe, so you talk about, is that just the property to the north?
I believe so. It's a little bit farther up the road.
On the way to Stafford, if you took, you left our parking lot, took a left, it's right there.
It's right there, yeah. It's, is it, is it your tributary that goes down into the Willamantic River?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, so I'm looking at it on the GIS and it's a pretty good size area relative to pretty much the same size relative to your, your park. So I guess, you know, maybe the conversation needs to be sought out with that if you, if you're planning and zoning. Town planner can provide us with that contact information and we can look at it and how they're gonna develop that. And if there's, again, when you look at our footprint, a hundred and twenty-five feet, right? So guys, sixteen thousand square feet, we're not a big footprint, you know, so. And it's literally right down the road. And is there some sort of joint venture that could happen with that? And certainly, Alan, if you're all aware, this ARPA money is gonna start becoming very free to spend pretty soon. So if you're for that or against that, I'm not sure, but but it it's, it could be a possibility. So I I don't, you got, you guys have any other questions? I, you know, because I know you guys
I do. This is Stu, hi.
Hi.
I respect what you guys are doing. It's pretty cool. But I I noticed you've approached, and you said in the beginning of your session that you've approached multiple towns on this concept.
Yep.
You've got irons in the fire, so to speak, in a bunch of places. So if Talon says, okay, let's do something, what's your geographical area for the next best location? It's probably not Wellington. Or, you know, so what happened to some of these other towns? How far apart do you want these fields?
There's only gonna be one field. And
We got one in Old, you don't want one.
Right, there's gonna be four in the state. Miracle League, we have a parent company, Miracle League of Connecticut. So there's gonna be four in the state. There's gonna be one in the East Lime one. There's gonna be one in West Hartford. It's probably gonna be one in Fairfield County. There's not enough special needs kids to have, you know, more than, more than that in the area. And what What's that?
And I guess you'd like one east of the river, I guess.
We, we, we like one east of the river. I've done challenger baseball for thirty years, playing on subpar fields. And this is sort of a gift I want to, you know, give the community. I've been a CPA for thirty-eight years. Managing partner of an accounting firm in Vernon for twenty-six years. You know, so I have a lot of really good contacts. You know, the, the, have given us the ability to raise a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We've gotten some sizable donations. Twenty First Century Talon Fund gave us twenty-five thousand dollars. Miracle League Connecticut gave us twenty-five thousand. Berkshire Bank gave us ten thousand. The Reds that we're running, you know, we have, like I said, we have Tim Zoo of the Red Sox on our advisory board. He's given us a five thousand dollar unbelievable Dell Technology Suite package where you're parking in the players' parking lot before the game, and he's given a tour of the stadium. We're hoping to raise twenty thousand that way. So we're gonna do it.
Anybody wanna buy a raffle ticket, guys?
I did send it to Alan if you're interested. I did send it to Alan.
Three towns have you approached east of the river?
We've approached, right now, we've approached Vernon and Talon, you're the third. And then we have Iowa called to the town manager at Coventry. And we're basically wanna go where the best location, that's gonna cost the least amount of money to put the field. The reason we approached Talon in the first place, I'm gonna be honest with you guys, I'm not, you know, we approached Talon, they had a crumbling foundation primary school. Called Birch Grove, you've probably heard about that one, sixty million dollars to replace it. They had portables there. Underneath the portables is the exact, is the infrastructure we need. So the drainage is there, the gravel's there. We we went to them before they resided the field and said, hey, we want to put this field here. You know, and we're willing to put, you know, put eighty thousand dollars into the project right now to pave it. You know, you'll have a blacktop area. Within two years, we'll turn it into a field. If we ever got that location, it would probably cost us four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Whereas any other location would cost us five fifty. You know, where we are with Talon right now is on Tuesday, they had a a town council meeting. We've been talking to them since May. They had a town council meeting. They voted unanimously to share the cost of an engineering study to see the best place for the field. So the issue you got there is the possible displacement where three, four years ago, it was soccer fields. Then you had the crumbling foundations, so the fields have been offline for three years. So we went to them and said, hey, these fields have been offline for three years. Here's what we'd like to do. We only want a small footprint of it. We'd like to put it here. It's gonna save us a lot of money. So now they're doing an engineering study to see, okay, is that the best location or is there other places? They would probably, you know, if we could get that Birch Grove site and save a hundred thousand dollars is probably our first choice. But, you know, there's a lot of grounds, you know, the Talon Soccer Club with six hundred kids are against us.
Yeah.
You know, we want all our U six kids at the same field at the same time. You know, so that's something that, you know, the town has to decide. You know, we, we've been working on this, you know, since about two years ago, and then COVID messed us up and everything. We'd like to agree on a location by hopefully the end of April. That's our, we're having a gala at Cheney Hall in Manchester. We want to hopefully announce where our location is gonna be.
What about that button Vernon, right off the highway that was the
The Sportsplex.
Yeah, that, that seemed perfect.
Yeah, Home Depot owns that. So I'm not sure, nobody, yeah, Home Depot bought that for four million dollars. That was gonna be a Home Depot Design Center.
Yep.
And in two thousand and eight, they just, the world shut down. Um, with a, um, and they basically are just sitting, they're just sitting on that. And what an eyesore. It's just, it's just terrible.
It's horrible.
Of what it is. And I, you know, I don't know what, you know, what's going on with that. But we did have a meeting, you know, last week with the mayor of Vernon. He's very excited. You know, he's looking at possible locations. And I guess that's all we can ask you guys to consider. Is it something you want? Is there a location it would work? And, you know, and just get back to us and say, you know, yeah, we'd love to have this in our town or, you know, the other thing Alan shared with me is economic development is a little different in Wellington and Vernon in regard to bringing people to the community. You know, and I'm sure Jeff Kelly would be happy because he'd sell more pizzas. And the TA might be happy and the two gas stations off of sixty nine would be happy. But there's not, you know, that that town center per se. And where, you know, other communities where you're bringing in a hundred to a hundred and fifty families every week, you know, there's the economic development part of it too. And then, you know, the other thing we're talking to towns about, like, you know, Arca, whatever other money is out there, do they have money to put something, you know, or grants to put money into something like this? You know, that's the other thing we're sort of exploring. We're just, again, trying to get a beautiful field built as quickly as possible.
I I like everything about it, and I wish we had a spot that worked. You can see River Road is kind of jam-oed, but that soccer field that's annexed to us eventually where River Road is, that to me would be a great spot to go.
Right, absolutely. And, you know, and, you know, when Alan brought it up, you know, I understand you guys parting with a field. You put your heart and soul in and fought to build. You know, with the hopes that, you know, Little League comes back again and, you know, you know, who the heck knows? You know, I hope, you know, I hope it will too. The numbers will change and, you know, I, you know, from my reading, it looked like it was more not being able to find volunteers to run the league as opposed to, you you know, enrollment. And 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 that's a challenge.
COVID kind of kicked it up a little bit.
Yeah, and that's a challenge in this day and age. Um, you know, you know, in doing that and um and 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 so Alan, you had said the soccer field's generally only used for practice?
Yeah, well, as long as I've been there, which admittedly isn't that long, uh, all of the records of people renting that field is one or two teams and they use it for practice. So.
Now, are those travel teams?
I don't know.
You guys don't have a rec soccer program?
Bill Bill Billyack knows probably the most about that space.
Yeah, the the rental is uh usually rented by the premier teams. So those are those.
So is there any, you know, I'm 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 looking at Google Earth, you know, between the soccer fields and the parking lot. Is is there enough, you know, I'm I'm looking at the space and the space is almost comparable. If they're only using it for practice, if it was a little smaller, you know, when when you say practice, you know, and they're scrimmaging, I I just, is there anywhere else on that, you know, next to the pavilion in that area that the field might work? Again, I can probably share my screen. I think I still have um the rights to do it.
They practice there, but there's there's usually multiple teams practicing simultaneously. They might have three fields set up on that one.
And and so the rentals revenue to the town?
Yeah.
Okay, so I, you know, because I, you know, it looks like there's a goal here and it looks like there's a goal there. Couple benches here.
They do use it for games too. It's lying for games. They take care of it. They take care of it on their own. The town doesn't doesn't do that.
Okay. You know, and you know, and maybe if we came two years later and there still wasn't Little League, you know, the timing might have been better.
Yeah, I'm hopeful Little League bounces back. I'm a baseball guy. I'd hate to see baseball die.
Right. You know, it's kind of funny. I grew up in Orange, Connecticut, down on the shoreline. I was thirteen years old and I played midget football. And the next year I was supposed to be a running back. And the league disbanded. They couldn't get a president and football never came back. We we never even knew what a soccer ball was down in that part of the state. West, they played soccer in West Hartford, but it was big football country and the football it it just never came back. And the first time we ever saw a soccer ball was freshman year in high school. So times have changed.
Yeah, I I think Alan maybe can talk to somebody about that property store. And I don't know how far we go, but it's trees and river and I think we're pushed as far as we can with the soccer fields.
Yep, yep, okay.
Well, on my end, I'm going to continue to see if I can, you know, about that alternate site right up the road.
Absolutely, that would be great.
Find out. And I'll keep you guys uh updated with what I find out.
And we'll keep you updated where we are in the process. Um, you know, that's what Vernon's doing. Basically Vernon's looking for a location for the field. And with Talon, you know, Todd and I have a meeting tomorrow with the town manager of Talon to um set up, you know, the um specifications of of the engineering study, since we're paying for half of it. You know, we're trying to keep the cost down in certain locations where they've talked about, which are just DOA. Again, because they're just not ADA compliant. And, you know, it it Talon, a little bit open Pandora's box in regard to allow any engineering study. Because if the engineer comes back at this Birch Grove site and says that's the place for it to be, are they fully prepared to put us there? And um, it's interesting, you know, it's sort of interesting. And um, you 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 know, ADA is a slippery slope. You know, that's for sure. But no, Alan, if, you know, let's keep the dialogue going. Absolutely. And but we respect, you know, we respect your opinion, you know. Ideally, we would have loved to have been on that baseball field. That would have been perfect. But, you know, it's, I guess it's too soon.
It's too soon.
It's too soon. You guys fought hard to make a beautiful park and, you know, it's too, it's too soon. And and we can understand that. And, you know, I'm glad, you know, we were able to clarify that. And, you know, anything you guys can do to help us support the project, you know, I did send Alan a bunch of events we have going on and things we have doing and, you know, spread the word and, you know, it's going to be an asset to Northern Connecticut. And, you know, I'm sure we would draw, you know, special needs kids from Wellington too.
And I think you're so close to UConn too. That's got to help a little bit.
Oh, yeah. Jim Penders is, Jim Penders will do whatever he can for the field. He's running, we actually have a clinic on Super Bowl Sunday. He's running it along with Chris Donafria, the manager of the Hartford Yar Goats. You know, so we got fifty kids going to that. You know, it's going to be good, you know. And we have a gala April thirtieth, like I said, at Cheney Hall. We got our golf, we sold out our golf tournament last year, raised thirty thousand dollars and you know, been able to meet, you know, we got about forty, fifty people that now are involved in this whole process, so.
Well, it's a beautiful project.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
We appreciate your time, Alan. Let's keep the dialogue going.
Sounds good.
You guys have a great night.
Nice to meet you guys.
Okay, nice to meet you too.
I got, I'll talk to you.
Bye now.
All right, gentlemen, are we still here?
Yes, we are.
You are?
Yep.
I I do think a little too tight down in that corner. And I I I do appreciate what they're doing, but you would lose that park, I think, completely, Alan. Like, if 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 you're driving a lot of, once that gets popular and a lot of families start using it, you're going to that you're going to lose that park, I think. And it's just not enough parking. There's not enough space. If you were able to turn half that soccer field into that special needs field, you'd you'd never get near that park again.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna see if I can find another spot that might interest them. You know, Mike, Mike was telling me, he was like, he was the one that came up with the ARPA idea. You know, if we can talk to to some of the other areas, he sent me a map too of Wellington owned property. I'm gonna keep looking into it and and, you know, maybe maybe ARPA is something we could use for this, you know? Ask for however much money to buy this little section of land and then give it to them and, you know, Parks and Rec isn't paying for it, you know, but then the whole town gets the benefit of this and.
What about the rest of you guys? And what do you think about space and it's a beautiful project, but I just don't think.
I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great idea. I just don't think there's space and we can't, the path is crucial. Um, and I just don't think it's gonna.
The site, the site on the other side of the river, I think, since it's not developed yet, if that's planned in with the rest of that. They can be set up from the get go.
But to be, to be honest with you, that plot of land, it has just enough room for one soccer field because they're putting all their parking down there.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah, there wouldn't be any, even though it's a small space, it wouldn't fit in their current plan, I don't think. But Alan, check it out. I mean, I'm not, I think it's a great idea too. I mean, it's always for special needs kids. But I think, um, unless any of you wants to uh sell it, but, you know, you're talking million. You know, whatever they they paid for it.
Yeah, I think they they paid like two hundred and twenty thousand.
I'm sorry, yeah, two hundred, plus plus the million to put in the field. I'm sorry, yeah. Yeah.
Well, I'm glad to hear that you're not giving up on Little League. I know I'm new to the committee, but I have a rich history in Little League in Ellington. It's my hope that we bring that back in town. So I hate to see that field.
I was kind of surprised because the way that I was hearing it was they were going to take the Little League field and drop their field in our field.
That's what he told me. And the reason, the reason why I think he switched it was because I I mentioned to him the concern of losing the Little League field.
Yeah.
Which is why I think they were trying to find an alternative, but keep it at the same location.
Yeah, they'd have to put in bathrooms too, I would imagine, right? To be ADA compliant. They'd have to put in a lot of stuff. Stuff, right? I mean, you can't just use a out a hoardage on.
I I agree. And I think parking is the big thing too. They're they're going to demand a certain amount of parking spaces.
I think they're assuming they can use that commuter parking lot, you know?
I'll be back. I'm not going anywhere here. I'll be back.
Don't take us in the bathroom with you, Ed. All right, well, I I think it's a great idea and I'm glad that they came and talked to us about it and it'd be awesome to see it in Wellington. But I I for one, just don't think it can fit into River Road. And it's it's great that special needs kids that have a good place to go, but you'd be stopping able bodied kids who have been using that park from using that park.
Yeah.
All right, so has anyone looked at the minutes?
Yep.
How do we feel about approving them?
Sure.
I'll make a motion.
All right. Somebody want a second? Nobody wants a second?
I'll second. I'll second.
Bill Billyack, all right.
Alan, out of curiosity, um, do you have, do you have a rental agreement with anybody this spring for soccer?
No.
Out of curiosity, not yet.
Okay, Hall's Pond. I don't know what that's about.
Good one. You didn't, you didn't read it, Joe?
I'm a little busy. I apologize.
Did everyone else read it?
I don't remember losing that much money.
I like what you, some of your suggestions, Alan, I do. Okay, okay. So I I just wanted, I I'm trying to gauge if I should just read all of this, which is three pages or give the Cliff Notes version.
Cliff Notes.
Okay, so, all right, I'll try and keep it brief. So uh, Hall's Pond, according to, you know, the the revenue sheet and the expenditure sheet, lost nine thousand and seven hundred dollars last year. And most of the fees are from lifeguards.
Yeah.
Actually, the, it was, I I believe it was, oh, it's right here. Lifeguard wages were eleven thousand, three hundred and fifty eight dollars.
Holy God.
And in my computer, from what I was able to find, I mean, uh, twenty one passes were sold for people to swim at the pond. So the pond made one thousand, six hundred and forty five dollars. So that's, there's your nine thousand, seven hundred dollar loss, which is mind blowing, you know, and.
You know how how COVID affected that with the passage the year before, like forty, fifty?
So I only have access to the records as long as I've been there. So I can't look back at previous year's stuff in the accounting software. But, I mean, Joe told me in one of my first days, Hall's Pond always loses money. You know, I'm not sure, you know, that everybody knew.
Dollars.
No, right, right. It wasn't that that high a number, but.
Well, I think it was, it's been around three thousand it's lost.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, I mean, either way, it's it's still taking a heavy loss. So
Yeah.
What I did was I wanted to look into some options to potentially fix this. And I talked to the Talon Parks and Rec Director about his pond at Crandall Park. So he had, it it's almost a mirror situation. He loses ten thousand dollars per, or he lost ten thousand dollars per season that that the pond was open with lifeguards. So what he did was he contacted the state of Connecticut and he asked them about their swimmable water sources because the state has a bunch of areas where they say, go ahead and swim, you can do it. But then they have signs around that say, it it doesn't say this, but it's swim at your own risk. That's essentially what it turns into. And so he he essentially copied exactly what they did. And they don't have lifeguards. It's open seven days a week with no lifeguards, with the appropriate signage all around. And um, now they don't have any loss of money. And uh, I added, I had a little update. I also talked to the Coventry Parks and Rec Director and she said Coventry did the same thing last year. They have two ponds and no lifeguards. They have the signs and and all that. Valley Falls in Vernon also has limited days with lifeguards. They might have like two or three days during the week with lifeguards and then however many, however the rest are, the number, they don't have them, you know, so. Obviously, people can swim there when there's no lifeguards. So this is a trend that lots of towns are doing to save money with their ponds. And um, another interesting thing that I think would would mirror in Wellington is the Talon Director sent out a survey, a townwide survey. And only eleven percent of the people swim in the pond. But eighty five percent of the people want the pond open to swim in. Yeah, so I, it's probably the exact same thing in Wellington. Everybody's going to say, yeah, we want to swim there, but nobody really swims there. So basically, I I came to the realization that if we can, we should try and have a compromise, which is, let's let's provide a couple days with lifeguards and then the rest without. And I was thinking those days should be the weekend where you presumably would have the most people come in. So we have lifeguards Saturday and Sunday, Monday through Friday. It's open. People can still swim in it if they want to. But we don't have lifeguards present. So I think that would save us a lot of money. Everybody still gets what they want. People can swim in the pond if they want to. If they want to go to the pond with lifeguards, they still have days where they can do that. So I wanted to run all that by you, see what you all thought about it. And uh, the last, the last part of it is, i- if we all do agree to to do this and move forward with this plan, we don't own the pond. So we would have to get permission to do that. So I think that's where, if we agree, I would get a lot of, you know, um, I would make a write-up of, you know, Talon does this. This, they do this, they do this, they do this, they do this, and then go to the Beckers and say, look at this sheet. Towns are doing this. Would you allow us to do this at Hall's Pond as well?
I think it's, it's just an insurance issue for Beckers, basically. As long as they're comfortable, insurance wise. Yeah, I don't see why they wouldn't be, but Mikey's right. You got to ask them.
Alan, has the town historically offered swimming lessons to children in the summer?
Yes. Yep.
And we're not going to do that anymore?
Well, under this, under this new approach, I don't see how it would be doable. But another thing of note is that uh, Star Hill, they, they're, a lot of people go there for for uh swimming instructions now. You know, they they have a big pool. They have like ten girls or or guys that are working there. And they just have class after class after class and it's cheaper for them. So I'm not even sure what we charge, but it seems like they have it, a monopoly on it at this point. So where we'd have to keep lifeguards, two lifeguards there for the week, you know, to have two kids, three kids come in a week and and get that. You know, to have two kids, three kids come in a week and and get that that instruction. We're never gonna make anywhere close to the amount of money off of it to to cover the cost of the lifeguards. You know, so I think I think that. You know. I I mentioned this to Stuart. I talked to Stuart over the phone uh, the other day. My dad told me it's not all about money. That you need to provide programs to the park, or sorry, not the park, the 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 town. And doesn't really matter all the time if you make money, lose money, and I'm like, I understand that. But you, like, it's also my job to make sure that stuff like this doesn't happen where we're losing nine thousand dollars a year. So that sixty people can go swimming for a couple months.
But to your dad's point, that's what Hall's Pond has always been. That was our loser. But I, but we can't lose nine thousand dollars.
A lot of money. It's almost seems like it's getting out of control on how much we're losing. And a lot of it has to do with the minimum wage we now have to pay.
Yeah.
We have two people there, and the fact is, it sits empty. I think it's very important to have the pond open. Because I know, you know, before we adding, uh, before we put our pool in. Uh, you know, we had nowhere to go, and there's a lot of other people have nowhere to go, and I think it's important to have that as a resource. But I think we, if we can do it without the lifeguards, that'd be great. I mean, I, you know, we have to be prepared or. What could happen though, too? You know? I mean, someone could drown, that's all, but I mean.
But someone could drown when the park is closed, too.
That's true, and they could drown with a lifeguard there, so.
Right, exactly.
Let's one or two.
You know.
That's how you get fired as a lifeguard, one blue kid.
I know in Ellington, when I was there, we had a lot of outside people using the lake. And the lifeguards also acted as quasi-security. Also, I don't know what happens in Wellington if there's other towns using our facilities and. You know, what that looks like, but.
Good point.
Pond is, the pond is sufficiently. Secret, you know, discreet. I mean, it's not very visible from the road. Uh, I mean, no one knows how to even get there. We don't get too many people from out of town coming there, as far as I know. And if you really wanted to, you could easily get get to the beach, whether the 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 gate is locked or not.
Sure.
You know?
So will you still sell passes? That's the key, or just?
So I would, well, I would sell passes for the weekend, but it would be at a very, very reduced cost. Yeah, I'm not talking like sixty dollars for, you know, the family pass like it's been, you know, I'm thinking maybe fifteen dollars. Or or something very low. So I mean.
Enough to cover the lifeguards, just enough to cover the lifeguard fees, right?
Oh, we're still not gonna cover the lifeguard fees, and even with. You know, two, two days a week with lifeguards, we're still not not gonna cover it, but this will turn. Instead of having a huge loss, it's gonna be a s- a much smaller loss.
What's the thought process there, just so that you have some presence occasionally?
Not well. No, it's that. I really was thinking like. Peop- there are probably people that do want to swim there. And they probably have kids. And so it's, it works out for everybody, right? So we're still gonna give them days. Where they can use the pond with lifeguards. And it's gonna be Saturday and Sunday where I I think that. That's when the most people will come.
Why do we need two lifeguards?
Yeah.
Well, so. I don't think we do, but I typically, they they have two. Um, somebody mentioned to me, in case there's a neck injury. They would need two lifeguards in order to get the person out of the water.
Yeah.
No, can I say something? You need it so that we don't have another. Guy come in when there's a young female lifeguard there. Then she gets cat, you know, raped and murdered like it happened up in 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 Massachusetts, you know, twenty years ago. They still haven't caught the guy. So you can't leave a single, you cannot leave a young lifeguard there in that in that very secluded location like that. Where sometimes there's no one around, and then you get some creep show up, and we got a real problem. That's why you have two people there.
Agreed.
So if we're gonna have any lifeguards, you have to have two at any one time. And if you do it on the week, if if the weekends are the busiest, whether it's Saturday, Sunday, or Friday, Saturday, Sunday, whatever. Then that's when you have a lifeguard, I guess, if at all. You know, if you want to do it that way.
How much are the lifeguards paid per hour?
Gotta be fifteen or fourteen, whatever minimum is.
Well, i- if you got one lifeguard, fifteen dollars an hour, that's one kid, if you sell passes for fifteen. That would just be five kids per lifeguard. You wouldn't have more than ten kids for two lifeguards? Wouldn't it pay for itself?
No, because the pa- the passes are for the whole summer.
Oh, fifteen dollars for the whole summer?
Yeah, well, I mean, the the price historically was, you know, sixty-five dollars for a family pass for the whole summer. You know, then they they had family passes, then they had single passes, which I was for one person. And I believe that was like thirty-five dollars, something along those lines, but you can see, I mean. You know how many you'd have to sell in order to. To really bring in some money to to cover the cost of the lifeguards, it's it's never gonna happen.
Right. So I agree, I think you should reduce the price and make it, since we're not, if we're not gonna have the lifeguards there, and. Maybe, you know, whatever, to some reasonable sum. And um, whatever that is, leave up to you, but um, or we can talk about it, doesn't matter, but. I guess um. We have to decide what we should to think about and decide whether we want to do this. I think it's a good idea.
If Beckers allow it.
Right.
If we all agree on it, then I can go forward with that and talk to them about it. You know, but I just wanted to get approval from from everyone first, you know, if we're all on board, then we take the next step of planning.
All right, Alan?
What's that, Sue?
We're talking about no passes.
We would have passes for the weekends, so during the week, anybody can go. On the weekend, when we have the lifeguards there, that's when you would need to have a pass to be there.
Does, does. So they say, if Beckers are saying no during the week, do we, is there alternate plan, just do the weekend with lifeguards and that's it? I- if they say no.
I mean, that that's an option, that's that's an option.
Well, you might want to talk to John Patton before you talk to Diane. That's all. I would start with John.
Okay.
Okay. And um, and the other thing, too, the town's insurance policy covers the town's use of that field. Excuse me, of the pond, so, you know, so I, well, it's all the same, so um. Just make, you know, remember that, just when in when in in your conversations with them, with which whoever you speak to. It's not gonna, I don't know, I I don't know that it increases their liability at all. I think the town is fully insured. And I'm hoping that that's not an impediment.
What is Talon doing, Alan? Is Talon doing no lifeguards anytime?
No, se- it's open seven days a week, no lifeguards any day.
So why don't we?
Does the town own those ponds, or is it owned by a?
The town, Tal- Talon owns.
They own those.
Uh, the the pond there, and Coventry owns their two ponds.
Yeah, it's a little bit different.
Well, I agree with Joe. Why don't we consider doing that ourselves? Seven days a week, no lifeguards.
Yeah, I mean, if you're gonna do no lifeguards during the week, what's the point of having them on the weekend?
I mean, it's really just the. I I want to give everybody. What they want, you know, because I mean, we can all agree to do this, but. Don't, I kind of have this feeling, like it's gonna be like the survey, right? Eighty-five percent of the people want to be able to swim in the pond, and then if it went out, hey. Percentage of people that are okay swimming in the pond with no lifeguards. I I feel like there's gonna be some. Pushback there. People are gonna say, well, we've always had lifeguards there, we should have lifeguards there, so it's kind of like giving them what they want. Everybody gets what they want. If you want to swim there with your kids, with lifeguards, here's the time to do it. That's really what my thought process was behind it.
What are your open hours on Saturday and Sunday?
I don't know. I haven't, I haven't gotten there yet.
So if you're gonna hire a couple of kids to lifeguard, you'd have to be open at least five hours?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So. If it's ten hours a weekend and it's two kids. That's twenty hours, that's three hundred bucks a weekend. Plus. You know, for their pay.
Yeah.
And how many weekends will we be open? Ten or eight?
I think somebody was telling me that it's usually open just for two months.
Okay. So twenty-four hundred bucks it would cost us, maybe twenty-six, because there's, I don't know, taxes and.
Yeah, I mean, I, so.
Let's say three grand.
Yeah, I mean, it almost sounds like you guys are thinking, maybe we should just go no lifeguards at all. I mean. It's an option. Do you want me to just move forward as of right now and see if we we are allowed to do it there, and then we can meet again and talk about. If we want to have the lifeguards on the weekend or not?
Well.
Alan, if we can reduce the open hours. The hours that were open. And the length of time, it seems pretty restricted. If there's no lifeguard, why do we, why do we care if it's five hours or eight hours?
Um.
Well, we wouldn't, we wo- we wouldn't care. We wouldn't care.
I was just trying to put a number on the cost for the lifeguards, if we did them.
I know that. I'm thinking of something positive here. We could open it a little longer.
I mean, I have no problem. Yeah, if there's no lifeguards, it's only gonna be, I'm gonna be the person opening and closing the gate, so it's. You know, I can do that before I head in and when I leave work or or what, you know, whatever the case may be.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. Is there some oversight, though, at Crandall's and at Coventry? Like, is it close to another facility, so there's people around? Because we're never gonna be around.
No, the, the, their pond is right in their park. I- it's basically would be like if there was a pond at River Road. You know, n- nobody's really there. It's just, you know, in terms of like a town employee or anything.
Right, but but y- you'd see what's going on at the pond. Our pond, you never see what's going on.
Yeah.
But I, the idea of not having to pay lifeguards is fine by me.
Okay. All right, I'll move forward with it then, and at least I know too that I can move forward now, you know, that's, this is not, this is, I think this is. A big topic, you know, I didn't want to step out of bounds, you know, I wanted to make sure that you all agreed that we should do this before I. Talk to the Beckers, or you know.
Is it something where, why, I'm just curious, I know that they let us use the pond, did they let us use the pond on the condition that we have lifeguards there? Is that it?
I doubt it.
We need to.
Always assume there's lifeguards there, but.
Been so long since we opened that, I don't remember.
I mean, do we need their permission?
I don't know. Well, yeah, I think you gotta ask their permission.
Leave from them or rent from them, so I think so, yeah. There must be a agreement somewhere.
There is, it's like a dollar a year, and it's a, it's a real contract of some sort.
Okay, I don't know where that is, though. To try and find it. Maureen probably knows.
Oh, yeah.
All right. That's a good one, Alan. I think that's a, it's a huge loss to avoid.
That would loosen up a lot of funds for us for other things, too.
Yeah. I'm amazed that we lost nine grand there. You know what kills me? I'm pretty sure that our first select woman told us that. Open the pond at any cost, and she will get government money to back us on it. Doesn't look like that happened, did it?
Over money.
So while we were talking here, my son lifeguarded there several, a bunch of years back when he was in college. And at Hall's Pond. And I asked him, I said, uh, I said, Matt, when you were lifeguard at Hall's Pond, did any of the lifeguards ever save anyone from drowning? And he said, no, people barely even swam unless they were older. They just went to cool off and sit by the water, so. I don't know, whatever, for whatever that's, what that's worth.
Always at one time, Eddie.
I know. The, yeah, but we'll put a sign up. So.
All right.
Okay.
I I like the fact that towns around us are doing the no lifeguard thing, so there's your, you know, response if.
Yes.
You talk to the Pattons and ask them how they feel about it.
Probably.
Yep. All right, budget twenty twenty-two, I'm scared.
No, no reason to be scared.
Oh.
So, I, I um. I sent this all out. I don't know if anyone took a look at it. I'll just go over the major changes real quick. Um, T O B maintenance. I raised that up. Uh, another shirt, another two hundred and fifty dollars. I think that that field needs just a little bit more. Love and care, if you know what I mean, especially if we want to put, you know, make it a little bit better and put some of these uh, clay bricks in, you know, things like that. To spruce up the field and make it a nicer field and bring in more people. Um, that's not a real big one, it's just a change that I had. Um, we know about the three uh, field contracts. Um, all I did there was increase. Increase the budget up to what it should have been to cover the bid. So, but it ended up going up. You know, one thousand eight hundred dollars in one place, one thousand four hundred and eighty dollars in the other place, and. Only two hundred and eighty at River Road, but, so it looks like a very big increase, and it is, but. That's what the, that's what it should have been initially, so that's the explanation for why those went up. Programming, um. It looks like youth programming has been a thousand dollars for years. And uh, I I, something that I was gonna get to in my director's report. Um, I'm planning on having like week-long sport camps. Uh, I I don't know if anyone's ever done that here before, I don't believe so. Um, that's modeled after what another um, town has done also. Basically, it's three hours a day, and you bring in an instructor, and they teach the sport to the kids. And um. The instructor is an independent contractor, so they get a percentage of the money that comes in. So it's really just all profit for us. It's basically, where is it gonna be held? Then you get the person to teach you. I already have people in mind. Um, Maureen had a thousand dollars for youth programming. I'm not even sure what that was exactly. Well, I I said, it sounds like. What, something that I'm doing, and I I jumped it up to four thousand, five hundred dollars. And essentially, what all that money is, is. The expense of paying. The instructors, but we're not really paying for that. They're getting percentage of the money, so this is just my estimate of how much would be going out. To pay the instructors. Does everybody follow me?
Yep.
Okay, so there's, there's that. The R R A C toilet. Um. I got. Suggestions from people down at the park. That they wanted to have the toilet there till the end of November, because I guess people were still walking in the cold, and they still wanted a toilet there. So between that and the cost of emptying or having the the toilet emptied two times per week as opposed to one. I ha- I I actually left this blank, because I I didn't fill it in by the time I sent it out to you. I I brought it up to eighteen hundred dollars. So it started, last year it was one thousand, two hundred and fifteen. I brought it up to eighteen hundred to have it there for the the next, or an extra month. And then the extra empties. Um, and then the last. Uh, the two, two remaining ones are electricity at River Road. I mean, we kind of briefly talked about this before. Um, it was, it's been nine hundred dollars for years on the budget. We were over, we spent over half the money in six months, so I upped it to two thousand dollars. It's a huge jump, but I feel like that's, that definitely needed to happen. And the very last one is concerts at the park. That was always budgeted for a thousand dollars. Um, I'm. Perfectly honestly, I have no idea why. It should have been much more than that, because the cost of the bands is pretty expensive. You know, you're talking about on. on average, probably five hundred dollars per performer slash band to come out every Wednesday. So if you have, you know, six, seven weeks, it's, it's a big chunk of change. You know, some of them make seven hundred dollars, you know what I mean?
I think Maureen, Maureen usually gets sponsors to cover the, the band. I think that money, that money might be just for buying the stuff she sold at the snack shack.
Right, I mean, that, that could very well be, but you know, I was talking to the, the finance ladies and they're saying, you know, if paying the bands is an expense to run the event, then it needs to be on the sheet. So that's why I'm like, okay, so we have to pay those bands a, and it's an expense, so it has to be listed in concerts of the park. So that's why I bumped it up to four thousand dollars. And uh, that's it. The rest of it is essentially the same. I basically copy and pasted a lot of stuff. You know, I made, I made the statement in my email, I really can only change things that I've experienced, you know? I'm not gonna start changing numbers when I haven't gone through, you know, just as an example, summer camp, or summer, summer camp's a bad example. Uh, you know, boating course, you know, I don't know how much it costs to have a boating course. You know, I had never ran it, you know, so if I actually run a program and I can make a change, I could say, you know, we don't need to do that, or we can make this change and alter the money. So I really only made changes on things that I know about since I've been here.
That's good.
What's your budget increase?
Uh, it actually went down from hundred and fifty-five thousand to hundred and forty-eight thousand.
So is it a loss? You show a loss?
No, it's not, it's not a loss. It's requesting less money, basically.
And that's with the lifeguard money.
That's, yes, that's including the lifeguards because I, at this point, I wasn't sure what we were gonna do, so I just left it as it was the year before.
So we're not bleeding. We're not. We're not over budget.
So it sounds like.
Well, we're, we're not over budget. I mean, we, we still have, we still have money in the, in the, um, the fund balance.
Well, yeah, but you're gonna.
So this. What's that?
You're gonna present this new budget and it's not gonna be increased over last year's budget.
Right.
That's what you're saying?
Yeah, so, so some of that had to do with. Let me see if I can find it. I was gonna get into, to this, the in the, in the director's report. So summer camp wages, summer camp wages last year were eighteen thousand dollars. Okay? So I, I'm working with Jenny, we're running it jointly. And we're making some changes. I can get into that later, but uh, now the shared cost with Parks and Rec and Human Services is gonna be three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to pay for the summer camp wages.
Wow.
So I've made, I've made deductions in another, a number of other places.
Okay.
You know?
Maybe we could. Maybe we could run the camp without, uh, without, without camp counselors.
Or food.
So, yeah, that's.
Maybe we could run the government without anyone working there, too. That would work out as well.
We've worked, we've worked pretty hard for a lot of years to get the budget up to what we've gotten it up to. I wouldn't recommend going in with a budget that's four and a half percent less than what we've been getting. I would fluff some of these numbers somewhere and get down, you, if you, if you wanna make it look good for when we go to the meeting, you, you know, like a two percent decrease, but, but get as much money, money out of the town as you can because you can't get it back. It's hard to get it back.
So yeah, let, let me, let me just, how, I have a direct response to that. So based, based on what many people have told me, you know, some former directors of Parks and Rec and, and just people in the town, it appears as if uh, the finance committee gives Parks and Rec just enough money to cover the rec director wage, the assistant director's wage, payroll taxes and landscaping. And that's it. So, so it, it, the, I mean, in my mind, it's does, does this even really matter? They're not gonna give us my, any more money anyway. They're only gonna give enough for those things. You know, I mean, I can, I can change some of the numbers, like, if you want me to, I can make additions here and there to, to certain, um.
All I'm saying is that at the meeting, they're gonna say, okay, last year, you, last year, you asked for a hundred and thirty-three thousand, this year you're asking for a hundred and forty-eight thousand. That's not, those, those numbers aren't correct, but whatever we asked for last year, if you wanna, if you wanna make it look good and you wanna show a two percent decrease, fine. But, but if you, once you, once you set that number, then the next year, if we wanna come in and we want five percent more, that, we may not get it and we may need it. So don't go in with a four and a half percent drop.
Okay.
I agree with Mike.
I, I mean, we can make it look good, a one and a half, two percent drop, but don't go in, fluff these numbers somewhere, find somewhere to put it back in.
Lifeguards.
Mate.
They're already in there.
Increase the maintenance, increase the maintenance or, or.
Okay, that's, I, that's a good idea. I mean, yeah, you can never go wrong with with me, stuff is always going wrong, you know, we need to fix stuff here, fix stuff there, so.
We just lost eleven thou, nine thousand dollars at Hall's Pond. Don't ask for less. Our, our basketball program, which is usually our biggest moneymaker, may not do as well because of COVID or whatever. So make, don't ask for less.
Okay. All right, so I, I will, I will make increases to field maintenance at all areas. Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it's, the money will actually get used for that as well. You know, there's always stuff to do at, at these areas, so.
Like you say, something always goes wrong. We, we end up having to go to twice a week pickup for the portlets instead of once a week. You know, these things happen. The field suddenly needs extra fertilizer, whatever.
We don't wanna. I get a feeling you're gonna need a new well pump this year at River Road.
There is, there you go. There's, there's three grand.
So do you think that's something that I should throw in here for the like, where would it go?
Well.
R A C maintenance, I mean, I could I could plan for something like that. I mean, if we think that it's gonna need a new well pump, I can increase the R A C maintenance from five hundred to three thousand or whatever the cost of something like that might be i- in anticipation for that job.
Well, River Road, you know you need more electricity. You're trying to get a little broadband down there, so I, I think, oh, just across the boards, increase your maintenance, like, like Mikey said, I, don't, don't try and pick that we need a new well. But that well's gonna need maintenance. It's four years old, five years old now. We didn't get any water last year.
Um.
So your, your, your biggest change really then is, is the uh, summer camp, because you're dropping, you're dropping from eighteen thousand down to thirty-seven hundred dollars. You're, you're dropping fifteen, almost fifteen grand right there.
And then there's, there's also some, like, you know, the babysitter course and the boating course and the safety training course, like I dropped those to zero because I, I don't think I'm gonna be doing them. That's why I dropped them down, you know, they haven't been running years. And they don't make money. I, I'm kind of thinking of like, I wanna do things a little bit bigger, you know? It, you know, instead of making twenty dollars off of running a babysitter course, you know, let's, let's do something else. Let's, let's switch it up, bring more money in. That's, that's kind of how I'm looking at it. Um, so there are.
I'd be a little careful. That, that babysitter's course is pretty popular for a while. The COVID's killed us for a few years here and I got a feeling it's about to get back to normal, so it might not hurt to leave in those things that were there. Right? And don't take all that money out of summer camp. Because you, like Mikey said, you've, you know, Maureen and whoever came before you fought for all this and got it. Don't give too much back. And summer camp may change again in two years. Maybe Ashford says we wanna do, we're autonomous, we wanna do our own. Now you're gonna have to ask for it all back again.
Okay, I can make those changes.
No, you could bump up, you could bump up the uh, the, the lifeguard wages on the, on the uh, on the chance that we do have to provide lifeguards.
Like, I kept the lifeguard wages the same. Between last year and this year. Thirteen, it's thirteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars.
It's amazing.
So, all right, I'll, I'll, I'll pump up the maintenance on these. And I will put back in to the, you know, some of these other ones I took out. Babysitter course, boat, safe boat course. Safety training.
You just maintain last year's budget this year and be fine.
Yeah, aside from, aside from the uh, summer camp changes.
Are you sure that summer camp's gonna be that much cheaper?
Yeah, I, I, you know, wanna go to the director's report? I can explain it and we move on to the next thing.
All right.
We're good.
It's the very first thing I have here.
By the way, we're up.
All right, uh, so summer camp always loses money. That's, that's another thing. Uh, Jenny made me aware of this because the last time she ran summer camp with, with Parks and Rec, she lost six thousand dollars from running the summer camp. So she lost her whole fund balance. And, you know, Parks and Rec can, can take a, a lot bigger hit than Human Services can, you know? So she lost basically every dime she had there. So she was very nervous about running summer camp again, so we had a, we had a long meeting about it. I, you know, I'm, I'm telling her, explain it to me exactly how it normally runs, what are the big expenses, how do you do it? So she told me that, uh, they have weekly field trips for summer camp. So the cost of a bus to go anywhere is four hundred dollars. And you obviously have to include the cost of where are you going? You're going to a museum, now you gotta pay for ten kids to get into a museum, so it, it adds up. You know, so you're talking about six to eight hundred dollars per week for a field trip. So basically what I said, that, that is, you know, the pro, that's one of the huge problems here and we need to change it, so we're not going on field trips, we have to bring things to the summer camp. So, you know, have people come in instead of us going out. And that's gonna save a, a massive amount of money right there. She liked the idea. The, the second, uh, the second thing is they, they had four to five camp counselors per year. And so I asked, uh, what's your average number of kids? And so she told, I think she said like eight. And I'm like, having four to five paid camp counselors to have eight, ten, even if it's fifteen kids, you don't need that. It's way too many. And I tried to explain, you know, wh- when I was teaching P E, I'm teaching a class of thirty kids by myself. And granted, it's a little bit different situation because, you know, I was taught how to teach, you know, large groups of kids, you know? But still, I mean, two, two adults should be able to handle fifteen, ten, eight kids. So what the plan is, is to have two counselors instead of five. And Nan, uh, the Human Services Assistant, she, she has two, uh, two kids and they are like camp counselors in training, so uh, she's like the, I'm gonna have them volunteer every day. And I'm like, perfect. So we have two paid camp counselors, two volunteers. So we'll really have four people, we're only paying two, to look after, you know, a small group of kids. So between those two things, it's a unbelievable uh, savings. Um, and the, the other thing that I was uh, made aware of is that normally when it's a good, when it's good weather, the kids from summer camp, they walk to hall school and go swimming. So my plan there was to have one of the camp counselors also be a certified lifeguard, so that when those kids go there to go swimming, they have a lifeguard. So that's kind of the way I was thinking about, you know, solving all those problems at once. And, you know, Parks and Rec Human Services is gonna split the cost, so like I believe, I said it was like three thousand seven hundred dollars, something like that. But we're actually planning on uh, taking in more money than we're spending, so we're both gonna make a small amount of money. I don't really care about making a small amount of money. I just want it to not lose money. So.
Right, I like that.
That's what it looks like it's, it's gonna be. Um, we already planned it out that way and that's the plan. Um, I also, I verbally hired the two, the two counselors already. There are people that have done it before that uh, were recommended by Jenny, so we have those people on board. Um, I'm feeling pretty good about that. I'm not really worried about it. I briefly talked about the summer uh, sport camps. Um, I don't really know how much more in depth I need to go there. I'm, you know, I'm gonna have, you know, basketball and volleyball, like the classic sports, but I wanna bring some new ones in, too. I wanna have like ultimate frisbee and flag football, stuff that like the town hasn't really seen before, and I think that might be popular, you know? So I have people in mind uh, for instructors for all these things. It's really just gonna be straight profit, you know, for, for the town. Here, use this field or use this room or whatever it might be. The instructors are gonna make a percentage of all the money that comes in and it, it really kind of runs itself there. There's no real big expenses. The only expense is, is uh, equipment, you know? We've never run uh, ultimate frisbee before, so I'm gonna have to buy frisbees. We've never run flag football. I'm gonna have to buy, you know, the harness and the flags and stuff like that.
We did flag football a lot of years ago.
Yeah?
Yeah. There's probably nothing left.
Ten at least.
Yeah, it was a long time ago.
Fifteen, maybe.
So that's, that's my thoughts with that. Uh.
I like the ultimate frisbee. That's a great idea. You got the feel for it.
Yep. Um, yeah, then I got, so the Board of Finance meeting, that's February third, so that's this Thursday. So I, I believe that's gonna be a Zoom meeting. I have all the paperwork already, so, you know, I'll, I'll have to shoot it out to Mike, I think his name is, the guy who's on the, the Finance Committee. And it's basically just proof for raising the money for the electric bill and the grass. You know, I, I, I don't know how he can dispute that. I don't know if he would try. Well, I'm gonna say, you know, we need this much more money. It wasn't budgeted for, now it needs to be. Here's the proof, here's the numbers. We need that money.
But, but the, at the end of it all, you're not asking for more money.
You're asking for less.
So he's, you're just moving it around.
Right. So.
Why are we cutting services when we don't have a budget problem? I, I don't, I'm confused with, and I'm new to this group. I apologize for my naivety. I just, some of the stuff I just don't understand because I haven't lived in Ellington very long. But I'm hearing we're cutting this, we're cutting this. But all I wanna understand is, do we have a budget problem? Or do we need to cut because we don't have the money? Or we cut it because we're just good people?
Well, I think I, I think I can actually answer this. So the problem is, is that the town may or may not give enough money to cover the wages and cutting the grass. They might say, we're not gonna, we're not gonna give you all the money, or we will give you all the money, either way.
Can the town cut line items? Can the town?
No, they, no.
I don't think so.
No, they're just gonna tell you, you gotta spend three percent less and it's up to us to come back and say, here's how we're gonna achieve that.
Right.
Right, but, but if.
Why are we doing?
Let's just say, let's just say, for example, we need eighty thousand dollars from the town to cover wages and cutting the grass. And they say, we're only gonna give you uh, seventy thousand. Now, Parks and Rec has to create all that extra. Now, Parks and Rec has to create all that extra money just to pay for that bare minimum uh, to get back to even, basically. But that, that's a situation that happens with a lot of things. They're not gonna give us any money for the lights at River Road. They're not gonna give us a dime. So that means we need to generate the money from Parks and Rec to pay the two thousand dollar electricity bill at River Road. A, a, and that's, that's another example, but there's a lot of examples like that in there. So, we can't afford to be, to be spending nine thousand dollars of Parks and Rec money to keep the pond open, when we have to generate our own money to keep already established things going. I think that's really what it comes down to.
Right.
That's why we're cutting lifeguards.
Right, but if, if you're, if you're backing out on the lifeguards, you're just moving some of that money to another line item. So your budget's still the same. You've just moved the money around. And you don't think they're gonna be okay with that?
I, I don't know. So I, I've never gone through this before, but I, I know that can't, we can't afford to be losing huge amounts of money on, on certain things. Parks and Rec needs to generate all its own money to keep programs running. I mean, we can all agree with that, right?
But no, who says that? Who says that?
That is kinda how it works. The, the town pays for Alan's fees, Alan's pay, his assistants' pay, the maintenance. And that's about it.
The grass. That's what, that's what they pay for. So, so out of a hundred, we're, so we're requesting where's the paper? We were, we're requesting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They're only gonna give us eighty thousand dollars. So they're not, so they're really not paying, they're not paying Parks and Rec to run any programs.
So what is our budget? What's our budget, Alan?
But i- in terms of what? Like what they gave last year or what we're at right now?
A budget here of a hundred and fifty-five, five thirty-four?
But the town only pays a percentage.
And you're telling me that we're only gonna get a budget of eighty thousand, Joe?
Yeah, the town's budget is, right, it's only for maintenance and everyone's pay that's attached to Parks and Rec.
So our budget's gonna be eighty thousand dollars.
Yes, so
For everything.
Yes.
The, the, the whole budget is more than that, but we actually generate that money by programs.
If you, Stuart.
Anything over eighty is self-funded.
Right. Yeah, Stuart, if you look at that column where you said a hundred and fifty-five, three thirty-four, if you look directly above that, it says transfer from GF. That's transfer from the general fund. That's what the town gives us to run our department. So
That helps me, thank you.
There's a difference of like seventy grand that we come up with.
Cause a lot of That's all we're getting from the town is eighty-three, five thirty-four.
Yeah, most of our programs are supposed to be self-sufficient.
So if I wanted to, I, I'm just gonna make example. I wanted to start
Thank you.
A, a wrestling program, and I needed fifteen thousand dollars to start that program. If I went to the town right now and said, I wanna do this wrestling program, they'd say, great, go ahead and do it. But you're not getting any money from us to do it. So then Parks and Rec would have to take money that's already in Parks and Rec to start it.
That's the piece I was missing, so thank you. So that begs the question, where are we getting seventy grand?
Well, it seems to come up every year. I mean, you make money in basketball, you make money. There's money being made. He's generating money with soccer, generating some money with renting the park. We get donations.
Renting that, that park is crucial to keep that air down there for the soccer to be for rentals.
Oh, yeah.
Where's the line item, Alan, for, um, pro- proposed revenue for the rec department? Is it seventy grand?
It's on, it should be on the back over here. So I, I estimated a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars.
With, with including the eighty-three.
Total revenue.
And that's, and that column would be ninety-four, two twenty-one. So theoretically, we're asking for eleven thousand dollars more. Ten thousand, six hundred.
So you think you can raise ninety-four thousand dollars?
Yet we show, no, the ninety-four is from the general fund. That's what the town's gonna give us.
Ninety-four.
Yeah.
Well, that, yeah. So that amount hasn't been established yet, Stu. So on Thursday, I'm gonna have to go to a committee and, and show them all this paperwork and say, you know, this is how much Parks and Rec is gonna need this year. They're gonna make their decision, whatever that decision is, for how much money they're gonna give us. And then, you know, the rest of it is, is up to Parks and Rec to, to make the rest of the money. We don't necessarily need all the money either. Like, if we need five hundred dollars to run a boating course, I could just say, well, we don't have the money to ri- run the boating course, and then we wouldn't need the five hundred dollars. You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts to, to all this. That's what I've discovered.
What this show, so what this shows at the bottom here? Last year, last year, the town from the general fund gave us eighty-three, five thirty-four. And next year, we're gonna be asking for ninety-four, two twenty-one. That's a twelve, almost thirteen percent increase. Yeah, yeah. Overall, it's a minus four point six eight. So
So that, the general, I, sorry.
And we're gonna pay only, we're, you're saying, so we have to generate a, a minus four percent, but we're asking the town for thirteen percent more, right?
The reason, I think, the general fund is all those specific line items together. So we're asking for a lot more because of the field contracts. So those field contracts are going up by a couple thousand in each one. So that's, that's why, that's the big difference there, because those are the general fund.
That's what the Board of Finance is gonna be looking at. That you're asking for thirteen, that we're asking for thirteen percent more from last year. There's no way they're gonna
You just told me they don't care. You told me, Joe told me, you know, they don't care. They just paid the salaries. They're gonna say, one of the salaries, we'll pay that.
They, they're gonna, they're not gonna wanna pay any more than they paid last year. You might get a slight increase, but not much. What they pay, what they give us. And we, we, what did we bump last year? We were the, we had a big increase last year.
Yeah, we had like a ten thousand dollar increase in, uh, field maintenance.
And that was, from what I was, from what I was told, that, that one large chunk increase was specifically to like seed the field, so, something like that, which I don't even, I don't think that happened either.
It was seeding and fertilizing and we, I, I think they missed, I think they misunderstood. I, I think they got the impression that that was the mowing contracts that had gone up that much, when it was in fact us asking for money to overseed and fertilize. And I don't think they understood that. And they gave it to us and nobody said boo, but if you go in asking for twelve point seven nine percent more than last year, there's no way they're gonna give it to us.
Well, that's, that's gonna be a problem.
Because these guys, I, I've, have you settled with the mowing company? Or are they charging us more than we thought they were gonna charge us?
I, I haven't worked out. Uh, the best way I can describe it is, I, I talked to David Roy multiple times. And he, he is going to make it work. When, you know, uh, he's gonna, he's gonna spread things out. And we will, he's not gonna go over budget. And essentially, he said, you won't even notice that the field is, he's, he's gonna like, he's gonna mow it once and I don't know, what he said, uh, April or June, you know? And then he's gonna, he's gonna move something around so that he'll mow once, or he'll mow an extra time here, but charge it for July, if you know what I mean. He's gonna move things around.
He's gonna honor his contract. It's not happening anymore. But why, why do we need more for field maintenance?
Just regular field maintenance?
Yeah, you, you, you're saying that a lot of this money is for, you're adding two thousand dollars for each field for field maintenance this year.
That's, okay, so the last year's budget was made before the bid went out to the contractors. So they carried over the previous year's estimates, which were based on the last contract. So, for, as an example, they requested three thousand, five hundred dollars to do all of the field contract work at the town office building. So that was all put in, approved. They gave the money for that. Then the bid came in, and it turns out that in order, that in order to do that work for the TOB, for the new contract, it was five thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. So that's one thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars difference right there. So we have one of those. We have a one thousand and, uh, four hundred and eighty dollar difference for the school fields. So
So we have a legitimate, we have a legitimate reason for some of that twelve point seven nine percent.
It's, it's legitimate for all of it. All of the general fund. And that's, that's why I'm gonna, I have all the paperwork there. You know what I mean?
They may wanna, they may wanna, they may wanna see that. They may want that explanation as to why it's going up twelve percent.
Yeah, I mean, I'll be there. I, I, I'm gonna, I have it all up here. I mean, I worked on this for weeks. You know, I know exactly what's going on with the bills and the law.
We can tell you've been working on it. It looks good.
Blame it on COVID.
Well, you know, i- in, if, if I go into this meeting and they don't give me all the money to cover the landscaping, I mean, I, I'm gonna walk out of there mad, you know? It's, it's their job to give the money for the landscaping. So if they decide to not do that, I think that's not fair. Parks and Rec shouldn't be generating thousands of dollars to put into the lawn mower.
No, that's, that's true. But if, if the fact is that they had a set amount that they gave us, then they honored a contract that was higher than that amount. That's your argument. Cause I, we didn't honor the contract, the town did.
Yep. So, yeah, I have all this paperwork ready to go. I'm gonna shoot it to them in the morning after this meeting, cause the, you know, technically, we're supposed to be approving the budget at, at this meeting, so that I can send it in to them tomorrow.
Well, send in what you think is right and let the chips fall where they may.
Okay.
See what they say.
Yep. Is anyone, is anyone going to attend this Zoom meeting?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll attend it. When is it?
Uh, Thursday.
Okay.
Probably seven. He hasn't sent out a link yet or anything.
Yeah, send us the link.
Okay.
And it's a preliminary round, right?
One of many.
Yes, you're just presenting.
Okay. Yeah, I was, honest, like I said, I've never gone through this, so I don't know. I don't know how it works, so. All I know is that I was planning to go in there, show what I've got and explain it and defend it. And I, and come up with all the proof, which is what I've already done. So it's all ready to go.
Good. Wear clean underwear and comb your hair that night.
You want me to do the beard comb over?
I think you'll be fine.
So, uh, last two things on the director's report. Uh, we had the first ARPA committee meeting. I sat in on it, cause we had, we have to elect somebody from Parks and Rec to do it. Um, Stuart is willing to take on this, this role. Um, basically, what it is, is to, to sit there with a committee, uh, of all town representatives and determine where the ARPA money is gonna go and in what amount. So, um,
Thank you, Stuart.
Thanks, Stu.
Yes, Stuart, thank you. Then you can just direct all of it to the Park and Rec budget.
I, I will do my best.
And the last part is, uh, concerts in the park. I now have five performers lined up for that with dates set. And, uh, I'm gonna start fundraising for that this week.
Very good.
What do we do? Do we do seven or eight total?
Last year it was seven. So, I got five lined up right now. Um, I'm kinda debating what I wanna do. If I wanna get somebody new in there, you know, it, it's, uh, Tish told me that Maureen used to try and get one or two new groups in every year. And I've gotten all the people, or I should say, four of the five bands were, you know, very, very popular. And they're like, you, people are like, you have to get that group to come back. I'm like, okay, I'll get that group to come back. And then another group, uh, what, that I didn't hear that about, they just kept calling me over and over and over and over. And I'm like, okay, yep, you got it. You got the spot. So, that's how we have five.
Cool. How much does it cost? How much does it cost to pay a group? About?
I would say on average, five hundred dollars.
I got a group for you.
Free?
Five hundred dollars, I think would work. No, serious.
Okay. Uh, shoot me the info.
Yeah, alright.
You know, I, it, the other thing is, it's kinda hard to to know what kind of music a band will play, and if the townspeople of Wellington will like it. You know, I, I have a group, uh, one of my buddies, he, he, he is in a band. He does stuff for towns, you know? I have no idea what kind of music he plays. And I don't wanna invite him to come out, cause nobody's ever, you know, nobody from Wellington knows him. I don't know if he's gonna play the music they like. So it's, it's a little tricky situation, you know? If you, if you have a group and you really think they would be
Yeah.
liked, then shoot me the info and I can talk to him.
Okay. You want someone who's like part Raffi and part death metal, like somewhere in the middle of there, between Raffi and death metal. You're there, you'll be good.
That's a gap.
A little bit.
But, so what you're saying is no rap music?
I don't think that'd go over well.
No.
Seems like oldies, jazz, country and western works.
Whiskey, wine and coke. That's, that's a good one. That's a good one. There'll be a few head shakers on that one.
Good though.
It is what it is.
Alright. That's all I got on my end.
Okay. I guess we have
When's the first art meeting? When am I going? Did you send me anything?
The, I, I talked to Kelsey today. She said, uh, Kelsey is Erica's assistant. Uh, she told me that she's gonna send the stuff out to you first thing in the morning. Because technically, you had to be approved in tonight's meeting. And then she'll send, she, now that it's approved, it'll go sorta in the same process to get you into this group, which was, okay, now it's gonna go to some other board. Well, they'll vote on it or, or something along those lines. I don't know how it all works. So she'll send just you the stuff in the morning. And they have to officially approve it, but it's every two weeks. So, the, uh, first meeting was last week, so probably next week. Next Monday will be the first uh, or the second meeting, I should say.
Should, should we have a, uh, like a, make a motion that Stuart is that person? So I make a motion. Any seconds, okay. It's official, Stuart.
All in favor, good. You're there. Thank you, Stu.
And it, you can come in if you want. Sorry, Ed, uh, you can come in if you want and be physically at the meeting, or you can do it by Zoom. Either way, uh, whichever you prefer.
I'll be talking to you, I'll say you, plural, about agendas and where you think money should be going in anticipation of some sort of a budget being presented or requests for money being presented. So, we'll cross that bridge over the next week or so.
Alright. And one thing we'll have to figure out, probably sooner rather than later, by, by the next meeting is what do we as Parks and Rec want to ask for from ARPA? And I think
I'd say one thing, there's very specific things you can use that money for. It's very specific. So you guys learn that, and then you come back and tell us what it is you think we could do with that money. How's that? Cause I don't know. I mean, I, we need to know that first.
Well, yeah, but, but this is not a, this is not a reciprocating revenue, this is one time, right, this art money?
Yeah.
They're gonna wanna know, they're gonna wanna know what we want to use it for, I would think, don't you?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so I need some ideas here from you all.
What, what they.
Know what we're allowed to use it for, so I can give you those ideas. I can look it up, there was a discussion on it in the town.
What they think that Parks and Rec is gonna ask for is the construction costs to get internet at River Road, that's what they, that's what they estimate that we're gonna do, it was mentioned multiple times in, in the first meeting. Or not mentioned, but maybe, uh, you know, alluded to, you know, not sure.
I saw that, and I, and at the time I read what we could use the money is for, and I thought the internet fit for, for the, you know, within the parameters of what we're allowed to use it for. I'd have, again, I'd have to go back and read all that stuff again, but.
I'll get you some qualifying criteria from the documents and we'll go from there.
Alright, that'd be great, that'd be great, thank you.
Alright, so no old business, no new business, who wants to adjourn?
Right here.
And Mike.
Hey Alan, Alan.
Yeah.
His, his genre is, is Dylan blues and a mix, like a blues genre mix.
You think they'll like that? I don't know, I don't know, you think they'll like?
Saying a blues mix?
Yeah.
Blues and what?
Uh, he said, um, Dylan, like Dylan blues a mix, that's sort of genre.
That sounds good, we go to all the, as many of those we can, my wife and I, and we love them, and I think that would fit in nicely, I don't know, you know.
We pass out Rotten Tomatoes before every concert, just in case.
You should sell those instead of giving them away.
That's a great idea.
There you go.
Alright, gentlemen, I'm calling it a night. Stuart, thank you very much.
Thanks, Stu, Al, nice job.
See you guys.